That Rockland Cable you're taking it for, or just... Is that Rockland Cable you're taking it for?
Um, yeah, this is Rockland Cable's camera, yes.
Jim, how are you? Nice to meet you. It's my car, guys.
Nice.
All right. Thank you. All right. This is the public notice and proof of publication. Those are copies, okay?
Yep. All right, being seven o'clock, we can call the meeting to order, and this is being taped for Rockland.
W R P S Rockland.
First on the agenda, and the only thing on the agenda, is a seven o'clock P M public hearing. In this region, meeting notice, in accordance with chapter 291 of the Acts of 2014, in the zoning land use bylaws for N A S South Waymouth, the N A S Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing at 223 Shea Memorial Drive, South Waymouth, Massachusetts, on Tuesday, October 3rd, 2023 at seven o'clock P M, to hear an appeal of the decision of the Land Use Administrator of the Southfield Redevelopment Authority to deny a joint application for development plan and site plan approval, and application of variance for a proposed residential apartment building called Station Lofts, located on approximately 3.2 acres of land off Trotter Road in Waymouth and identified as tax parcels 597-136, 597-268, and 597-271 by the town of Waymouth. The appeal was filed by Affinity Park Realty Trust, property owner, and C P Endeavor Holdings One L L C applicant. A copy of the appeal is available for viewing by appointment at the offices of the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, located at 223 Shea Memorial Drive, South Waymouth, Massachusetts. Office hours are 8:30 M to 4:30 P M. Southfield Redevelopment Authority, and this was published September 19th and September 26th in the Patriot Ledger.
Yes.
So, well, how would you propose to do this?
I just want to indicate to the public that the meeting is being recorded by W R P S.
Meeting is being recorded by W R P S.
Right.
And how would you propose we do this? Would we have the applicant go first?
Uh, no, actually, technically, in an appeal, in accordance with our rules and standard practice, the Land Use Administrator would...
Go first.
As the first to prove.
Okay. Jim, if you want to.
Mr. Chairman, you'll want to open a public hearing.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yes, yes, yes. The motion to open a public hearing. So, the second in discussion, all in favor?
All in.
Here is open, thank you.
Thank you, appreciated. Just for the record, Attorney Robert Galvin is here. Attorney Galvin is general counsel and land use counsel for the Southfield Redevelopment Authority. He is here as a resource, should you need any, you know, anything as far as procedural questions or any organizational questions that come up during the hearing. I believe in your packet, you have received a copy of the appeal letter from Attorney McDonald. That appeal letter included copies of a pre-filing review, which we call a cover sheet, and went into detail as far as what I viewed as the deficiencies of the joint development plan and site plan application at that point in time. There was also a draft variance application that was before me to review from a completeness standpoint. That pre-filing review flags two primary areas of concern for me. And in the letter, I mentioned that, you know, there were major concerns, namely, the fact that there had been development on this particular parcel in the past that was related to a financing agreement, the grant that our predecessor had received to construct those improvements. The second item was the fact that there is a, essentially, a water sewer moratorium on the Union Point project currently. And my recommendation was that those items needed to be addressed before an official filing occurred. An official filing did occur, and at that time, within the seven-day window of review period that I had before me, I again noted those deficiencies in the filing, and at that time denied the application based on the fact that there had been no progress on those fronts, and suggested and stated that unless a will serve letter was provided by our water supplier, the town of Waymouth, that acknowledged that there was water sewer capacity for the project, as well as letters of support, not only the M B T A, but the Federal Transit Authority, the two agencies involved in that grant, to construct the improvements, that the project would not be able to move forward from an official filing standpoint. So, I have prepared some written statements to read this evening, if you'll indulge me. I have a little bit of discussion about the regulations, the zoning bylaws, and what I look to as the Land Use Administrator to guide me when applications come in. And then I have some testimony regarding the specifics of those two areas of concern, and why I felt that it was reasonable to ask of the applicant to provide this information at the time of the official filing.
Okay.
Okay? As Land Use Administrator and zoning enforcement officer, I'm guided by the zoning and land use bylaws for N A S South Waymouth, as well as the regulations. And the regulations include administrative rules and regulations, subdivision rules and regulations, architectural and urban design standards and guidelines, wetlands rules and regulations, et cetera, et cetera. Specifically, section 1.4(c) of the zoning and land use bylaws states, as provided in section 14h of the enabling legislation. And I'll provide the board with copies of this testimony so you don't have to jot everything down. "The authority shall develop and adopt a comprehensive and detailed set of land use regulations." The regulations. "The regulations shall contain detailed land use controls, including but not limited to procedures and standards for development plans, special permits, and site plan review, et cetera." Further, in the zoning bylaws, section 12.3, "The regulations shall include rules and regulations for site plan review, including but not limited to the procedures for site plan application." "Site plan applications shall include the submission materials and information as required by the regulations." "A site plan application shall not be submitted until it is fully complete with respect to such requirements, so as to enable proper consideration of proposed development and allow for a final action on the site plan." This is standard language. Now, if we go to the regulations, the administrative rules and regulations for N A S South Waymouth, article 2.2, paragraph F, "Review of information submitted in application." It states, "Upon the official filing, the lead reviewer," which is myself in this case, "shall review each application and its cover sheet for its informational content and determine adequacy of that information based on the completeness review conducted during and after the pre-filing meeting." "Each lead reviewer shall identify any remaining missing or incomplete information as soon as possible after the application is officially filed and notify the applicant expeditiously, but in any event, within seven days after the filing." My communications with the applicant all occur during the time periods allotted in the regulations. It goes on to state, "Depending on the nature of the proposed project, the lead reviewer may make reasonable requests for additional non-duplicative information beyond that is required by the minimum submission requirements." Further, in section 2.4b is employed additional rules pertaining to applicants states, "The lead reviewer may deem an application incomplete due to the applicant's failure to file with the applicable review authority all information required by the bylaws and these regulations, and any application deemed to be incomplete will not be processed further." "Applications will be presumed complete if the applicant has submitted all information requested at the pre-filing meeting and during the seven-day review periods following both the pre-filing meeting and the official application to the review authority." "If the lead reviewer or applicable review authority determines that an application is incomplete, it shall have the full authority to deny the application or relief sought without prejudice, but shall specify the incomplete components of the application in accordance with the requirements of the bylaws and these regulations." When we talk about what types of information is required to be submitted, and I'm, and this evening, I'm really just focusing on the site plan application. Keep in mind, this was a joint development plan, site plan application, as well as a variance application, but this evening, I'm just going to refer to site plan applications because it's generally the most complete. Section 4.3, "Application," within the administrative rules and regulations, states a whole list of bullets that includes basic information that should be included with an application. And the last bullet says, "Such are the material information as may be requested by the permit granting authority pursuant to these regulations that will aid the permit granting authority in judging the application and in determining special conditions and safeguards." "Failure to file the minimum information may be grounds for rejection without prejudice pursuant to section 2.4b of the regulation." So, that's sort of the rules and regulations that I'm guided by within the zoning bylaws and the regulations up here at S R A. Now, I noted two, two items of concern during the pre-filing review, as well as the, within the seven-day period after the official filing. The first concern I had, or first request I had, was that the applicant should provide letters of support from the Federal Transit Authority and the M B T A for their project that they're proposing. The applicant's appeal letter states that they are not bound by any promises or agreements made by the S R A or a former master developer regarding the property. This is simply not true. "This property off Trotter Road was and is a part of what is arguably the largest and most complex redevelopment mixed-use project in the region, a project that is bound by various filings, certificates, mitigation agreements, permits, et cetera, related to a state MIPA process that dates back to 2000 and that is currently in default." "This property off Trotter Road has already been redeveloped. The improvements were constructed as part of the multi-modal access improvements project in accordance with state and federal agreements connected to that MIPA process, as well as $8 million inter-agency grant agreement between the M B T A and our predecessor organization, the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation." I'd like to submit a copy of that inter-agency agreement for the record as exhibit one, as well as a copy of the grant agreement between the Federal Transit Authority and the M B T A as exhibit two.
Jim, you got to provide print.
Yeah. Yeah, print. I'll give that one for print as well. Here goes, sir. Exhibit two is the D O T grant to the M B T A. This was a federal grant that was flagged through the M B T A and then from the M B T A to the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation. The M B T A issued a memo to the authority on May 5th, 2023, on this matter, noting that it was, and it was their opinion that entitlements were granted by the S R A and the Station Lofts project was implemented, that it would be in violation of these past agreements pertaining to Trotter Road in the commuter parking lot. I'd like to submit a copy of that M B T A memo for the record as exhibit three. "Until such time, if the MIPA process is recertified and our state permits are reissued and the related mitigation requirements are reestablished, we and the property are bound by what is on record as of today." This is why the M B T A issued their memo outlining their concerns with any development moving forward on this particular parcel. So therefore, given that we are, where we are in the MIPA process, as well as the recent memo from the M B T A, I believe that it was a very reasonable request to ask the applicant to demonstrate cooperation from the F T A, Federal Transit Authority, and the M B T A by providing letters of support. The second item of concern that I had flagged during the pre-filing review, as well as post-filing, was the lack of water sewer capacity for this proposed project in the request for a will serve letter from the town of Waymouth. The applicant's appeal letter states that a will serve letter is not a customary requirement for zoning approval applications. While a will serve letter may not be customary to always provide, it may not be customary to always provide a will serve letter with, with an application for zoning approval. In this case, it is warranted.
Can you just explain what a will serve letter would actually say?
A will serve, a will serve letter generally would come from a utility provider. Doesn't have to be water or sewer, could be utilities, gas, electric, telecom, to acknowledge that a proposed development can, can not only, that there's capacity to support a proposed development, whatever that utility may be, and that, you know, at that point in time, it appears feasible that connections are feasible. So, if I need 10,000 gallons of water, 12,000 gallons for sewer collection, whoever's the utility provider, in this case, it would be the town of Waymouth, typically, a developer, a lender, may want to confirm that all the utilities that are servicing that project have confirmed that there's capacity and that connections are imminent. Okay? Some of the basic information, again, that we look for in a site plan application, this comes right from the regulations. That the, the application should include locations of inadequacy of existing and proposed onsite public utilities, facilities, and conditions, water, sewage, and drainage, showing size and direction of flows, and a brief written statement explaining how the proposed utilities and infrastructure comply with any infrastructure and utility plan approved by the authority pursuant to the subdivision regulations. Within the subdivision regulations, under article three, which is infrastructure and utility plan, section 3.1, paragraph P, as in Paul, water system design, water supply, the applicant is directed to contact the applicable subdivision board, which is the authority here, the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, early in the approval process to ensure the availability of water capacity to service the proposed development. The S R A is a registered public water supplier with mass D E P for this site. It has a consecutive system agreement with the town of Waymouth to allow the town of Waymouth to provide water supply and wastewater collection capacity for Southfield Union Point. Mayor Headland suspended this agreement in November of 2018 due to the default of the prior master developer. We were notified on August 26th, 2022, by Mayor Headland that this agreement was still suspended and that the town would not provide additional water for any new development until a permanent provider and source of water has been identified and acted upon. And this is beyond Waymouth just identifying a permanent supplier. This is on the scale of an M W R A or a quarry or a large supplier that could provide water capacity for the entire development. The mayor's letter was issued during a peer review of zoning approval applications that was submitted by an affiliate of this applicant who was currently proposing a 99-room hotel at the corner of Shea Drive and Route 18. So I'd like to submit a copy of the mayor's letter for the record as exhibit four.
Thank you.
To conclude, given what is required in our regulations and the zoning bylaws, as well as the recent letter from the mayor, I believe that it was a very reasonable request to ask the applicant to demonstrate that adequate water sewer capacity exists by providing a will serve letter at this point in the process. That is my written testimony that I prepared. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to provide copies for the board.
Thank you. You have any questions, sir? Mr. Young? Sounds pretty tough, you're right. I, and you're very specific, you cited the bylaw. Sounds, and it, from this side, it sounds very specific. I'm anxious to hear.
Happy to clarify any of the statements or any of the references at this point, but that's, that's what I prepared.
Mr. Chairman, is it your contention that the inter-agency agreement you handed out, exhibit one, I guess, carries over with the property that was sold to the defendant?
It, it's my opinion that the agreement survives. Remember, we're a successor entity.
Right.
Right, so I believe that the agreement survives through the new legislation and that unless I see something otherwise, that that, that, that subject property is, is still subject to, or what's in the inter-agency agreement.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? Okay.
Thank you all. For the record, Brent McDonald, an attorney at Nuttermann, Flanagan, and Fish, with offices at 155 C Forte Boulevard in Boston. Here with me tonight is Marco Cordenale, principal and founder of Cordenale Properties. As indicated, I represent the owner of the property, Affinity Park Realty Trust, and the applicant on these matters, C P Endeavor Holdings One L L C. C P Endeavor Holdings is a joint venture of Endeavor Capital and Cordenale Properties. Endeavor Capital does own a bunch of land in the base. You have to take a look at that map on your way out. We're everything in orange, just for color coding purposes. So, you know, as Jim indicated, we did file the applications, and we did go through the whole pre-filing review process, and we did file our appeal. So I think we're all on board with that. Where I think we, we start to veer off from one another is what the ability of the Land Use Administrator is to deny acceptance of an application. Nothing in the bylaws or the administrative rules and regulations, which are the two key items, require you to deliver a will serve letter or require you to deliver letters of support from anybody. So the only possible conceivable way that we would have to do that is under what Jim cited, is the reasonable additional information required by the lead reviewer. So we really want to get into why we don't believe these things are reasonable. A lot of it's set forth in our appeal letter, but I think we really want to get into sort of the two items. And I'll start with the M B T A, because that's the first thing listed in the Land Use Administrator's denial of letter. And I think you hit the nail on the head about the inter-agency agreement and what carries forward. There is nothing, let me give a little bit of history here. So as Jim indicated, funds were provided by the federal government through all the documents you've been provided. A bunch of grants were funneled through the F T A to the M B T A to do improvements at the base. That included, as we understand, the 75-car parking lot that is currently on my client's property. As part of that, easements were supposed to be granted to the M B T A, so they would actually have legal rights to be on that property. At the moment, they do not. They were never granted by the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation when they owned the property. It was never granted by any of the master developers that then owned the property. And my client acquired this property along with a lot of that land in orange through a sheriff's sale and foreclosure at the same time. So, at the moment, the M B T A has absolutely no rights to be on that property. Any use by the M B T A of that property would be trespassing. We have blocked vehicular use of that site since December of 2022, and the M B T A is well aware of all of this. The M B T A has never acknowledged in the 20 or so meetings I've had with them about this site to talk about the future that they have any rights in this property. So just want to start with that threshold point, that the M B T A has no rights in this property at all. So requiring us to provide a letter of support from the M B T A is just like requiring us to get a letter of support from any one of you or anybody else in this room that this is a good idea or a bad idea. I do not disagree that the inter-agency agreement still binds the Southfield Redevelopment Authority, still binds the M B T A. That's something for them, quite frankly, to work out. I can't, I don't know what liability the S R A will face from the fact that they didn't fulfill their obligations under the agreement, whether they're going to owe the full $8 million, whether the M B T A may owe it to the Federal Transit Administration. All of that is possible and conceivable, but that exists whether we redevelop this or not. Because as I said, nobody's getting access to the property right now. That being said, if our application had gone forward and we got to a public hearing on this matter, people would see that as part of our application and as a gift to the community, we had proposed to grant the M B T A access to 72 spaces via easement as part of our development. They would be in different locations on the site than they are today. It would constitute some onsite and some on Trotter Road, which we also own that portion of Trotter Road. But we had tried to come up with what we hoped was an elegant solution to a problem we did not cause and fix the issues with the M B T A and fix the issues that the S R A had with the M B T A on this site. We've talked to the M B T A about this. They've talked to the F T A about it. Nobody seems to want to move forward on that front because they're all scared of their shadow about who's going to owe who money. But we did ask for a letter of support. We provided a letter of support to the M B T A. They said, at least the staff members we talked to, seems like it looks okay, but I have to run up the flagpole. Not sure, the M B T A doesn't generally give letters of support, and they can't get an answer from the F T A. That being said, as I said, we've offered a solution as part of our project that we hope can fix everybody's problem. So if this doesn't move forward, the problem is never fixed. Because you can tell you, we're never just going to give the M B T A access. Certainly, the S R A could take the property and pay us just compensation, or the M B T A could take the property and pay us just compensation, but that's, that's quite frankly outside the scope of it. So we do not think it's reasonable to require us to provide a letter of support from somebody who has no interest in the property and what happens there. Second issue was the will serve letters. And a will serve letter, as Jim said, is a utility provider saying that they have capacity at that point in time, and they think they can provide it, and that's all it is. I could, if I got a will serve letter and developed this project today, and I go to Waymouth to get a water and sewer connection, I guess, through the S R A, and there's no more capacity a year from now when I actually build it, I'm out of luck. A will serve letter doesn't guarantee me anything. It just says, "At that point in time, we think we could probably give you water or sewer or cable or gas, as the case may be." So again, that's why a will serve letter is not something that's typically ever provided at this stage because it's so premature in the process. What, it doesn't get you anything. While we fully acknowledge there's a moratorium, we acknowledge in our application that a condition of approval, we'd be fine with a condition of approval and would expect a condition of approval that says that you need to get a water and sewer connection permit and any other permits and approvals you need. We would need other permits and approvals besides water and sewer connection. We need a zone of influence license from the M B T A. We may need other things depending on, on the full scope of the project. And so we know that, and we knew that would be a condition of approval, and that's what we suggested here, that's what we suggested on our hotel project that Jim referenced, where we did file an application there, and a will serve letter was not required. It's our understanding that will serve letters have not been required on other projects when they submit for site plan, development plan, or variances. We feel like we're unfairly being singled out for something that we know we have to fix in the future. When we know our final flows, we are going to have to get a water and sewer connection permit. We know that. We're either going to have to convince the mayor to lift the moratorium, or we're going to have to convince the mayor that we've done sufficient mitigation to account for the water and sewer that we would need from the system or contribute to the system. There are many ways to do that, whether you're removing inflow and infiltration. There are other engineering ways to deal with it. There could be payments for upgrades to other parts of the Waymouth system, but at this point in time, that's all premature. And so it doesn't seem fair to us to have to go get something. And so it doesn't seem fair to us to have to go get something that we know we're not going to get at this point in time, which results in this property being completely undevelopable if these are the standards for any sort of approval to happen. So, you know, happy to talk through any of this in more detail, but really just want to highlight the key points. MBTA has no rights at all, ever, and won't until we decide to give them or somebody decides to take it on eminent domain. And we think that we've provided solutions to these items that can be rectified during the whole process. And we, this whole process would still have to go through all the requirements of the SRA, it would be public hearings, there's no guarantee that the SRA would ever approve it, but we want our day before the SRA and the public to offer our vision for this site and for them to decide, the authority that they have on the statutes, the regulations, to figure out whether this is the right development for this site.
Questions? Was there supposed to be an easement over this piece of property? There was supposed to be an easement?
If you read the documents, yes.
Yes. Why is it not there?
The prior master developer never put the easement on. I believe the South Shore Tri-Town Development Corporation owned the property for one day. When we got it from the Navy, there was an immediate transfer to the prior master developer. That master developer did not fulfill the obligations that were a pass-through, were a pass-through organization. There were a pass-through obligation of that master developer that did not put the easement on. So I'm not arguing the fact that right now, the MBTA does not have, I'm not arguing that they don't have access, they're not allowed access on the property, that it is not an easement for the MBTA to operate and maintain the commuter rail parking of Trotter Road. So that was an obligation, you'll see that into the agreement. There was also an obligation for Trotter Road to be a public way in perpetuity, et cetera, et cetera. Okay?
Conceptually, can you just tell me where this parcel is? Is the MBTA law, is...
Can I show you over here? Yeah. It's hard to see, I know this far away, but you can see the MBTA commuter rail station is right here outside the base. This is Trotter Road coming from Route 18 here, Trotter Road in. This site, we'll mark up the plan, but it's this orange site right here, this sort of weirdly shaped site. This is it right here. You've got the Coast Guard Buoy Depot over here, just to orient you. I think this is called Woodstone Crossing, is that Woodstone Crossing? Woodstone Crossing is sort of right here. There's some wetlands up in here, and then there's certainly other development here. But my client owns this site, which is where the current 75 lot used to be, as well as this portion of Trotter Road shown in orange.
So it's on the other side of the tracks?
Yeah, the tracks run right here. So there's the commuter rail tracks and...
And then on the other side, the other side of the current parking lot, the tracks.
Yes, opposite side, yes. Directly opposite.
So I have a question. The MassDOT letter from May Fit clearly says that they don't support the proposal because it would violate the past agreements pertaining to Trotter Road.
Sure. And then, you know, if the SRA, but the fact that they don't have, the MBTA does not have an easement for this property, they've already violated those agreements. The MBTA does not have the rights it should have had, and certainly any development moving forward could foreclose the MBTA's ability to ever get those rights back. But that's, that's between the MBTA and the SRA under those agreements that Jim provided as exhibit one and exhibit two, and it's nothing to do with permitting and zoning.
But won't it be when, if you get past this level and get to the next level, isn't the same issue going to be raised at that point and going to cause you a problem at that point in time?
Well, I mean, the issue is, I guess, you know, if, if people don't want us to build the 72 spaces for the MBTA, or somebody doesn't feel like that satisfies the obligations of the SRA and the MBTA as part of our development, the SRA could still have plenty of liability under that agreement. But again, that, that issue doesn't go away whether or not we move forward, because again, the MBTA is never going to have any rights at this property and doesn't have any rights at this property, and there is no access to the property.
But you offered a solution to that by mitigation.
We did.
Thank you.
And I'm, you know, I'm happy to show what that is. I know it's not really sort of what you're looking at, but it is also sort of oriented you to the site.
Almost.
This shows what our proposal would have been, just to sort of go over the overview. Things in red would be project parking, things in blue would be MBTA parking.
Was this proposal part of your initial discussions with the land use administrator?
This is all part of our application.
This, this particular plan?
I don't think this plan was, but this just color codes what was in there that shows where the parking was and the 72 spaces that we proposed.
The proposal of the 72 spaces wasn't...
The 72 spaces in the MBTA was part of our application materials, yes.
I don't, it just seems crazy to me that you're willing to give them what they want, yet they don't want to take it. Is that what you're telling me?
The MBTA wants to take the deal, and we've met with them, and they seem at the moment okay with that, but they don't want to take a deal without knowing the FTA is also okay with that deal. Because they have liability, the FTA, because they funnel the money through. So everybody is sort of along this chain, SRA, MBTA, has liability potentially to the FTA if the FTA isn't happy that their money went towards, in the documents, it says 75, I understand, and 70, I think 77 spaces were actually built, we're offering 72 as part of the project.
So, I mean, this was part of the application, and I think rightly, the land use administrator reached out to the MBTA, MassDOT, and asked them, or maybe, I guess, how did the letter, how did this letter come about? Was it the land use administrator inquiring with MassDOT whether they were okay with it, or was it the appellant?
I have to go back. I think, I think the MBTA became aware of the pre-filing through various, you know, folks that were involved in with that, you know, peer review at the time, and they did decide to reach out to us with their memo.
Which at point you felt it was reasonable to acquire something from them?
Once I received that, you know, and going back, after receiving the memo from the MBTA, knowing where we are with the state permitting process for the project, we're in default. This is a master plan community with a master developer partner to this organization. Okay? This isn't just off Trotter Road, one or two parcels. This is a 1,400-acre redevelopment project that is tied to a NEPA process through the state that has been going on for more than two decades. And our concern is that unfortunately, that NEPA state permitting process is in default. There are state permits, federal permits that are in default, and one of the reasons why you're not seeing much happening here, because we've spent the last three and a half years trying to get a master developer back into the project, trying to get control over most of the developable property, most of the property that's still here on the base, so that we could go back to the communities and request zoning amendments this year and back into NEPA and the state permitting process next year, so that we could redo all the permits and the Section 61 mediation findings that agencies like the MBTA and Mass DOT will need to go back and redo. But until that point in time, unfortunately, we're stuck with old agreements, you know, old permits, some are good, some aren't good, and that is why you're not seeing much happening here, among other things. And unfortunately, you know, you have, you have the property owner that would like to move forward. We would like to move forward with this project too, but we are, we are tied to a lot of agencies and a state permitting process that's in default, and a water and sewer moratorium, and comfort property that unfortunately, from my perspective, I needed to see something at the application stage before I present something to this board of directors. For a project that might get built in six years or seven years, why would I bring a site plan application to our permit granting authority, special permit granting authority, who's going to issue an approval with conditions most likely that expire in two years unless construction has started? In my mind, I needed some, something else as part of that basic information, and I thought it was reasonable to ask for that.
That's the basis, do you think this is a reasonable request on both of the...
Based on the fact of where we are with the development, you know, Brent is right, we didn't ask for a will-serv letter on the hotel. The mayor told us that, yep, we still have, you still aren't getting any water, and this is why, that's why I asked for it in this case. So again, not normal and customary, but where we are with this entire development, I felt it made, it was reasonable to ask for something at that, at that stage.
So a will-serv letter, you've never asked for these in any of these previous developments here, is that the case on the water?
Typically not at the time of filing, because we had a consecutive agreement with the town of Waymouth that was still valid and not suspended.
So that's changed since...
That changed, that has changed, and the mayor has reaffirmed that. We would typically ask for that during the permitting process, prior to approval, generally during a peer review of an official filing, that is something that we would request before I would ask the board to render a final decision. Typically, we don't include that in the condition, we like to get that before the board makes a final decision on a project, and we have done that in the past. But again, things have changed.
Things have changed.
Things have changed.
It still says in the, I think it was the subdivision rules, that you have to ask to show that, I don't think it was, I don't remember the wording exactly, but it does say that they have to show that they have the ability to adhere to.
They, they should, they should contact applicable subdivision board, the authority in this case, to confirm that adequate capacity exists.
But did, did you do that?
Well, there's the water and sewer moratorium, but I, booking at the review letter, that box was checked, that we submitted those requirements. The basic requirements, the narrative, et cetera, were, you know, where is the water main in Trotter Road, how big is it? You know, all the, all the basic requirements for the filing were submitted, however...
But it says they have to, they have to contact.
Right.
So that wasn't done, there was no, that's what I'm saying, if it says you got to contact them, did you provide a letter that you did contact them?
No, we did not contact them.
So you did, so there was one piece of information that's required that you didn't submit?
I felt that they, again, by notifying them at the time of the pre-filing review that there's a water and sewer moratorium, from my perspective, no, they didn't directly reach out and say, hey, is there water capacity? They had just received the letter from the mayor about the hotel project, so I think they, they know that there's, you know, they know what the situation is.
Oh, of course, if it says in the, if it says in there that you're supposed to do this, but you didn't do this, I'm just laying the groundwork. It says you're supposed to, and you didn't do that, then the box shouldn't have been checked. That's what I'm saying. That's, that's all, I just, I'm looking at the letter, I'm looking at the word, that's it.
Just wanted to be clear, the box was checked here, at the beginning, we did it, the only issue was the moratorium. And just to be clear, there is capacity, the mayor just doesn't want to give it at the moment until he feels like the development is moving forward. The mayor could change his mind any day tomorrow, whether it's in this administration or future administration, make one-off decisions, that's a political decision, that's not a water and sewer decision. He can just tell folks whatever he wants, could be what happens. And as I said, we fully acknowledge that we will need to get a connection permit, and we will likely need to prove to the mayor, water and sewer staff, as well as the SRA, that we are making whatever mitigation the community gives to make it worth the mayor's while the lift is moratorium for the site. Whether that's going to be opening up the 72 parking spaces, which he's not going to get unless we get water and sewer, whether that's, as I said, removing inflow and infiltration to make the system, is there a net injury to the system? That's another possibility. Whether it's upgrading pump stations to create more capacity, there are a lot of possibilities out there, because this is not a lot of water and sewer for 110 units of development.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I'm assuming that we are all, that we all know about the proposed master developer that wants to come in. Are you trying to get in before that? Is that what's going on?
No, we've been a landowner here for certainly...
That, and I know this, I'm just, I'm wondering if because, why not wait until the new master developers in, do you not think that they're going to get in?
Quite frankly, there is no master developer at the moment. There's a designated master developer.
Exactly.
We've waited for, we don't know what the status of a lot of different things are, and they have a much different time horizon. They are a very large developer, they're a very well-capitalized developer, they're one of the largest, if not the largest, in the market, and they can have a 20- to 30-year horizon on things. Most smaller developers and owners don't have a 20- or 30-year horizon.
I just brought, I bring it up because it's one of those looming things that everybody here doesn't know and understands, and there's been public hearings on this for all three towns, so, did you get to that?
Yeah.
For you, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that the master developer team has been very clear that they are not requesting any zoning amendments or zoning changes to any of the, what we call developed land, which also includes property that's owned by Endeavor.
So it would not affect anything, so even if they came in, it wouldn't affect?
From a zoning, I'm just referring to the current zoning amendment requests that are in front of the communities. The NEPA process, state permits?
Different story.
That's, that's the entire, okay? Regardless of master developer or a smaller landowner, okay? In my mind, they're all, they're all impacted by what, what that state permitting process entails and what the mitigation requirements are, and where they're required to take place, no matter who the landowner is. Understood?
I'm going to ask Attorney Gill, what happens if we uphold Mr. Young's decision here? What happens to that?
Is it appellate right, which could be exercised?
To?
To one of the few, I think there's three, maybe court options, Land Court, House Court, and Superior Court. They have that right.
Or because it's, it was issued without precedent, so they could rework to their...
Reapply?
And reapply.
They could cure the deficiencies and apply.
Or work out something in between, potentially.
Correct.
And that's not our job, I guess, right?
No.
So I have, I guess, a comment on the will-serv letter piece of this. To me, part of the land use administrator's obligation is to make sure that there's appropriate utilities can be provided for the proposed use. He knows at the moment that there isn't utilities for water and sewer based on a previously declared moratorium by the town of Waymouth for water and sewer hookup here at the airbase. So to me, I don't know, I think it's reasonable for him to ask the applicant to show that, you know, there will be some service provided by Waymouth. That moratorium went into effect November of 2018, it's been almost five years. I wouldn't call that temporary. I don't know that I would issue an approval, you know, pending obtaining permission from the town, because it's already been five years, it could be another five years.
It certainly could be, if we were willing to take that risk, that we could politically change the mayor's mind as part of this process.
Well, it's, I mean, and, yeah, I mean, that's, you know, one of the avenues to take. I mean, I, I think some, you know, I think both of these issues, you know, may have, certainly the first one could be worked out and not even be an issue if everybody was willing to work it out. The will-serv letter, and to just take, to stay, take a step back, one of the contentions you had was the land use administrator's actions were unreasonable in requesting that material. Clearly, the document allows him to ask for additional information.
Reasonable information.
Reasonable information. In the water and sewer case, we know going in that there is no water and sewer service, and so for you to have prop utilities provided for your proposed use, it seems to be reasonable for him to ask something of you to ensure that you can get your water and sewer to have the project developed. And so the last thing they want is for you to spend a couple million dollars digging a hole and then stop, because you find out it's going to be another five years before the moratorium's lifted. So I think he's, he's acting, he's taking the steps that, to me, he's obligated to take in that case. I think the first... I think the first, uh, the first item in the agreement in MEPA and the, the parking lot is like a whole other animal based on the legality of it and, you know, it's not this board's purview as far as I understand it to, you know, litigate that out here. I understand, you know, you're willing to, to work with the parties involved and it seems like they don't all wanna work at this point, maybe because there's some liability to them in the end. I mean, it's, the intent was clear to me, this whole multimodal assess, um, access improvement project. I mean, it, it, it took place. Everybody acted based on a understanding of an agreement. And everybody committed substantial money to carry forth with this agreement. And I understand it sounds like the easement part of it was not granted and I don't know short of you giving them an easement or litigating it, you know, were they litigating against you? Were you litigating against them? That, you'll get an answer to that. Is it reasonable for the land use administrator to inquire or provide some other additional information that that won't be a problem to your application since it's part of the property?
We would say no, it's, it's, they have no rights. If there's no rights in the property, why would we go ask somebody?
Well, but you have a letter, even if it's a May fifth saying that, that was violating the agreement and he's responsible to ensure that they stay within the agreement. And so, I, to me, again, I can try, I understand why he sought some additional clarification before moving forward.
Yeah, I guess our position would be that the fact that...
I don't know, give, give me your permit and let the litigation happen, right? They're gonna, they're gonna file during the appeal process and we'll go to court and it'll just turn into a...
Right, and I don't think the MBTA would file, but I would suspect that the MBTA may want its money back, potentially. If we weren't giving the 72 spaces, maybe the MBTA would want its money back. But that's not a reason to stop zoning approvals. Zoning doesn't allow you to, to not approve something because it could cause you some liability because you breached an agreement that has nothing to do with zoning. And if people don't wanna come up with a solution here, then there'll be no solution. That liability exists.
And you're offering a solution.
We offered a solution, but if nobody wants to take it, then, you know, I guess we'll say we tried and then the litigation happens. We tried to find a solution for everybody and nobody wanted to take it, so good luck, everybody.
Is that a separate, that's a separate and distinct parcel from the site that you wanna build, the apartment building on, correct?
Uh, no, it would all be part of the same parcel.
It's all considered one parcel?
Yes.
Okay. And Trotter Road bisects it?
Trotter Road is part of our parcel, but Trotter Road is...
Okay.
Uh, if you look at the plan in front of you, you can see Trotter Road is, is shown there.
Trotter Road provides frontage for access, so the applicant owns that section of Trotter Road in the parcel where the communal parking is. So, Trotter Road currently in that section is privately owned, provides frontage for the proposed, you know, for the, essentially for the current improvements and the, and the proposed improvements. At the time of the application, I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there were spaces identified for MBTA use at certain hours of the day, certain days of the week. Essentially, some of those becoming shared parking spaces that I'm sure the MBTA would love, or the apartment operator would love to manage the use of those spaces. So, that was presented at the time of the application, was a shared parking arrangement.
When, when's the last time, did you, have you had discussions with the MBTA?
Yes.
When's the last time you had a discussion?
Probably about six weeks ago. We used to have weekly meetings with the MBTA. It was part of that. That plan sort of shows what we laid out. Uh, everything in blue at the time of our application, we were still talking about shared parking with the MBTA. So, everything in blue was provided in the application, shared parking. As Jim said, it would be available during commuting hours Monday through Friday. This is the overflow lot. As we understand, it does not get used at all on the weekends because the main lot isn't full. Subsequent to that and after many meetings with the MBTA and having them think through it and their parking operations, people really just couldn't wrap their heads around a shared parking concept because where they have those shared parking, it's sort of a dedicated lot and they can't have that with the cameras in the in and out of parking. And so, they'd have to manually sweep during certain hours of the day to charge people, et cetera. And so, as part of our discussion with the MBTA, we upped our offer and agreed to make it exclusive parking for the MBTA to remove that issue for them.
And what was their response?
Great. We love that idea.
Okay.
Okay. We're getting what we want. It's a little further away, you know, in all candor, the MBTA says it's a little further away from the station than we would ideally want. As we pointed out to them, again, now this sort of has to do with why we're here, but we pointed out to them that the furthest space here is X feet from the station, which is much less than it is at several other stations, I think Attleboro, Riverside and Newton. They're all further away from walking. Everything would be accessible. We would be replicating and handicap spaces per their request. We were preserving their access into the railroad right of way, which we've also shut off. They haven't, they're gonna have no way to get into that railroad right of way that they're using to do some improvements and that's also gonna be shut off now.
And what about the federal agency? Are they involved? They're not involved with that at all?
The MBTA waffled back and forth between whether they wanted to go to the FTA or not. Originally, it was no. A week later, it was yes and it was no, but I think they decided yes. I think they had some discussions with the FTA. The FTA is now fully aware of the issue and that they didn't get what they paid for. What comes of that, you know, we, we can't say. But I mean, it's full disclosure, the FTA is well aware that this is an issue now.
Is, is there, Bob, you can probably tell, is there a possibility that we continue this? You guys see if we can...
No, no. The board has to act within 100 days.
Make it violent on the appeal.
When was it filed?
August 4th, the 100th day, I believe, for business day would be November 10th that you're required to render a decision on that.
Yeah, I think the 100 days was Sunday, November 12th, so it's a little interpretation question whether that rolls with the 13th or 14th.
It would roll with the 13th.
So, we're gonna, we have to...
I, you know, I, I, the way I see it, there's, there's kind of two distinct issues. One is buried from the other and, you know, the MBTA issue is even more complex than I think it's even presented here. But it is a potential impediment to the project. I mean, my understanding is there was a constructed MBTA station or a parking lot, you know, when a lot of these agreements were made and although the easements were not granted, it was, there's physically a parking lot there. And I think Brent correctly describes it. There's no recorded easement. At least, I'm unaware of any recorded easement, but, you know, there are arguments that, you know, they, it was mortgaged and foreclosed with knowledge of the physical improvement of a parking lot on the property, which creates a whole bunch of other issues. I look at that as a really complex legal issue, not really sure that there's a solution here, you know, for a ZDA to decide. The other issue having to do with water and sewer, I think, is a very different issue because under our administrative roles, we have a requirement that an applicant demonstrate the location of inadequacy of existing and proposed onsite public utilities, facilities and conditions, water, sewer and drainage. And it has to be a brief written statement explaining how the proposed utilities and infrastructure comply with any infrastructure and utility plan approved by the Softland redevelopment authority. And that's considered some of the basic information that comes in with the site in the application. I think that's a very different issue than the, than the parking lot issue.
Right.
So, I, you know, I would encourage you to compartmentalize them too. It's being two very distinct types of issues. One's a legal issue. It, it, it may very well be solved, but I'm not convinced that it's necessarily a legal impediment to a project proceeding, although at some point, someone's gonna duke it out with everybody. And it may be all of us involved in, in that solution. And there are some easy definitive solutions that, you know, the taking has been mentioned. The, you know, the, the federal government can do it, the MBTA can do it, the SRA can do it. All have a mandatory authority. No, no one has to go to town meeting votes to do that. Those, those can happen very easily, so I guess that will solve itself. The other information is more customarily a part of what you would see in an application to a zoning board of appeals. And I think you have to decide for yourself whether that type of information is the type of information that's required before the SRA has to consider a project. And I can't give you the answer because that's why you get big bucks.
That's what I'm saying.
Great.
So, if we compartmentalize, compartmentalize these two things, are we taking votes on each denial or on the denial letter in total?
You know, I, I tell zoning board of appeals, because I've been doing this for 30 years, you can affirm, you can deny, you can affirm in part and deny in part. Uh, those are all options. The one thing you have to do is agree all three.
All three.
Right, because you're a three-member board and our rules require the board to grant the... In order to grant the appeal, because that's what Attorney McDonald was asking you to do, you would have unanimously agree to grant that appeal, which overturns his decision. Or you could deny the appeal and you can deny it by not having the sufficient vote or, you know, all three of you agreeing to deny the appeal, in which case Jim's decision is affirmed. But then you can do a hybrid of that. You can agree in part, uh, you know, agree in pardon, grant pardon, deny it.
Deny, pardon.
I believe the violation requires to vote on each item, right?
Um, I think the record would be clearer if you segmented the issues.
Yeah.
So, I think that would be...
My reading of it was, yeah, a roll call vote was needed for each item. So, to me, that...
I, I don't think, uh, I think you can take a roll call vote and my recommendation would be that you do handle these issues distinctly.
Yeah, so we take a motion on each, each issue that was...
Yeah, and then you can take an overall vote. Yeah, you've decided the underlying issues, like this would be mine. You know, and, you know, we have our recording secretary here and if the board needs some assistance in writing up whatever it is you determined, then, you know, I'm certainly available to assist you with that.
Okay.
If I may, through the chair, just, you know, the, the language that Bob just read, Attorney Galvin just read, the locations of inadequacy, et cetera, et cetera, is part of the, the cover sheet portion that was marked as completed. So, I, I don't think that that's a sufficient basis because that's not a reason for the denial. The denial has to do with will serve letters. The language of the administrative regulations is met. It's in, uh, pre-filing review, page three, the site plan one. Do you have that one? Just kind of a whole part of my...
It should be in the, it should be attached to the appeal letter that was on the table in...
Okay, that's right. That's where I was going. What page on the, what page in the appeal?
If you go in the appeal, there's a application cover sheet that said site plan on it, which starts at...
Seven, yeah.
And that has numbered pages. If you go to page, I wanna say, which one is it?
Yep.
Uh, page three at that.
Okay. How far down?
Uh, third, the last box.
I'm gonna always say to one or two. Who checks those off?
I do.
Why don't you check it off?
Because there was a discussion on, again, what was available on the site, but I also note that there's a water sewer moratorium for the town of Waymouth.
Okay.
And in my cover letter, I note that I have a couple of major concerns with the proposal, including the fact that there's a water sewer moratorium. So, they did provide information as far as what utilities are in Trotter Road and, you know, serving the facility. But again, I think we're splitting hairs here, Mr. Chairman.
Subdivision.
So, I think, I think we're just splitting hairs at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you look at that, it recommends that we address these for the filing. Those are required.
All right. And Mr. Chairman, it's not my, it's not my position as land use administrator to actually, you know, threaten or deny at a pre-filing stage. I was very clear that there were major concerns. I anonymized the two concerns and that was my recommendation as a land use administrator. And I'm not the authority to actually issue the final permits. That would be the special permit granting authority. So, I believe it would be a little bit beyond my reach at a pre-filing stage to demand certain things or threaten certain things. So, I, I felt that was, I said, I voiced my concerns as strongly as I felt was, was necessary at the pre-filing stage, at the time of the official filing. At that point, I was able to legally, you know, deny the application.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
I don't have any.
From, anybody from the public wanna speak? If not, I guess we can take a motion to close the hearing.
Close the public portion of the hearing and then you can deliberate.
Right. So, do we have a motion to close the public portion of the hearing? So, move. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, I guess we need to take each denial individually. So, we have, the first would be written letters of support from both the FTA and the MBTA rescinding the terms and conditions associated with the grant construction of the multimodal access improvements project. So, as to whether or not we think it was reasonable for Mr. Young to, to find out that needed to be submitted as part of the application. Any discussion, motions?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, on that, um... You know, I feel like the fact that there is no easement, um... To me, kind of limits what could be asked for by the land use administrator. I understand there's an underlying agreement. I think it's all gonna just have to be litigated. I think it's one of those applications, you know, that those that oppose it are gonna immediately probably file an appeal during the appeal process and it's just gonna go to litigation unless something could be worked out. I guess I'm having a little trouble with the reasonableness of asking for, um, permission from MassDOT. And what was the other entity?
Federal Transit.
The Federal Transit Administration when they, they, they don't, I guess, from what testimony I've heard, is they don't have any legal right or use to the property yet because nothing was recorded.
Yeah, the MBTA or the FTA don't have any legal use. Legal rights.
They all need to sit down at the table and just talk it over. That's it. It's the way, it's the way I see it.
So, my contention is I would grant the, uh, the appeal on number, the issue number one being the...
So, fine, fine in favor of the applicant on issue number one?
Yes.
You wanna make that in the form of a motion?
Uh, if we're done with discussion, I can make that motion.
You, rock. It's one of these things, I just have to go over it. See, I'm used to having other members that keep talking away, I think. That's the, that's my biggest problem.
Oh, keep thinking. That's fine. I know.
No rush. I, I hear it. I agree with it. I absolutely understand it. I'm just looking at the, I'm looking at the repercussions if we do. I agree with you 100%, but I'm just looking at the repercussions if we grant the appeal on this. What can happen?
Is, to me, it's gonna be litigated either way.
I, yeah.
You know, so, I mean...
And I, and I, honestly, I don't think it was unreasonable for Mr. Young to request that based upon the letter he got from the MBTA and, you know, I, I don't think that was unreasonable.
But in the grand scheme of things, if they're willing to go through this, start the permit process, even start building and then all of a sudden have hundreds of thousands of dollars into this and have somebody turn around and go, nope, I don't think that's, I think you're gambling. If you're willing to do it, go for it. I'm, I'm not a gambling man. I buy one dollar scratch tickets, all right? I, but if you're willing to, I don't think this board should stop you from it. So, I would make a motion to, to we cancel the ones.
Oh, you can second his motion.
I can, I'll second, I'll second his motion.
Right.
I'll second your motion.
All right. Any discussion on the motion itself? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. So then we have number two, which is a, the will serve, I'm not gonna call it so-called, will serve letter from the mayor of the town of Waymouth committing to provide all necessary water and wastewater services for the proposed project. So is that a reasonable request by-
Mr. Chairman, my, my contention is, the facts of the case are, there was a suspension of the memorandum of agreement for the provision of water and sewer by the town of Waymouth dating to November of 2018. And it explicitly said that the developer would have to find a permanent provider and source of water, and it be identified and acted upon. That has not happened for five years. That's not a temporary situation in my mind. And water and sewer is, is an essential item that is needed for the proposed use, for the proper operation of the proposed use. We have nothing else to indicate that there's a water and sewer source other than Waymouth, and it's very unique that they have a moratorium. I think the appellant, in his argument, stated that it was not customary for a will serve letter to be provided, and I would agree with that, but this is a very unique circumstance where we know there's an existing moratorium and it's been in place for five years, and there's no, no factual evidence provided to us that that is going to change because nothing has been provided, that a provider or source of water has been identified or started to be acted upon. And so therefore, it's my contention that it was a reasonable request by the land use administrator.
Any other discussion?
I would second that, if you make a motion.
That would be my motion.
I'm seconding that.
So the motion would be that-
To uphold.
To uphold Mr. Young's-
Yeah, the motion would be to deny the appeal.
The appeal.
Deny the appeal, which is to issue number two, I guess.
Issue number two.
Okay, so that's your motion?
Yes.
And we have a second?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
So your overall vote, I think you should take a vote, would be to grant in part and to deny in part the appeal. I think you should take a more vote, confirm your overall opinion on this particular appeal.
If a motion to that effect?
Consistent with the two motions you just made.
To grant in part and deny in part.
Correct.
So, motion would be to grant in part the denial?
So the motion would be, let me help you with the motion. Based upon the two decisions you've just made, your draft, your potential motion, which you can adopt if you agree, would be to grant in part the appeal and to deny in part the appeal for the reasons stated in your prior votes.
That's your motion?
That would be the motion.
Is there a second?
There is. Any discussion on the motion?
If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, that's unanimous.
Now you have to close your public hearing. I don't think there's any other topics for you to decide.
No. If a motion to close a public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
See, you have to file a written decision within 14 days, so you'll have to have one meeting to look at it.
Oh, approve that. So we have to set up another meeting on this one?
Yes. You don't have to set it today because it's not, it just be, you don't have to meet to actually discuss, you know, the written decision. But you need to file a written decision within 14 days.
Who's drafting? Who's gonna draft that? Are you gonna help us with that?
I'll get the meeting minutes, and I'll help you draft it. I can work with whoever one of you wants to.
Sounds like a chairman's job.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, it sounds like a chairman's job.
All right. So do we have a motion with chairman?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.